Testing, testing, testing. Testing.
Testing.
Ah, hot dog. We're live. Wait, wait. We have one viewer. Oh, that's me.
We have one viewer.
Alright, we're live.
Good evening, welcome to the October thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one meeting of the Poolsville Planning Commission. On the agenda tonight, we will review our minutes from the August eleventh meeting. Have any announcements? Don't, we don't have any public comment lined up that I know of. No new business, but we do have some old business with a comprehensive plan and a discussion with Wallace Montgomery. Has everybody had the opportunity to review the minutes from the August eleventh meeting? That would be Kevin and Lexi. Any questions, comments, or edits?
Make a motion to approve the minutes from the August, uh, two thousand twenty-one Planning Commission meeting?
I'll second that.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Um, as far as announcements, I was gonna ask, um, well, first of all, welcome Tony Tommasello to his first Poolsville Planning Commission meeting as the town manager of Poolsville. Welcome.
Thank you.
Uh, and do you have anything you wanna say to the commissioners about how you got here and all the viewers at home?
Sure. Hello, viewers at home. Um, I, I'm long history Montgomery County, uh, was town, uh, city manager in Gaithersburg, uh, for eight or nine years. I was there for twenty-four years. Took a break in twenty twenty into twenty twenty-one until, um, this opportunity presented itself. Um, very interested in, in this process and this group. I mean, Gaithersburg has, uh, you know, a reputation for new urban design and, and planning. Uh, but it also has, uh, you know, a dedicated staff of planners, about fifteen strong, so, you know, writing master plans is not, you know, and, and they, they submit them by element, you know, as opposed to a comprehensive document. Um, so, you know, how this is gonna work, you know, without that back, back staff, I'm, I am not a planner by trade and don't really have any background in it, so just interested in following the process and getting to know everybody and, and what the priorities are reflected in the plan of, of the residents and the businesses of Poolsville.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
Do you have any announcements from the staff?
I, I don't believe so. Of course, I wasn't told that I was supposed to have any, but...
No, just typically just if something happens, then it won't inform itself. But if you don't know anything, then...
Okay, no, I do know.
Uh, that's true, that's true. Yeah.
I believe Martin is out of state.
He is out of state. So his announcements will have to wait till next month. No public comment, correct? Nobody lined up, nobody in the waiting room, so no new business. Welcome Wallace Montgomery, if you wanna come up and your name for the record. Press the little speaker button on the microphone at the base.
Good evening, uh, my name is Lauren Good and I am a project manager with Wallace Montgomery.
And my name is Ray Moravec, I'm the vice president in charge of planning for Wallace Montgomery.
We are excited to be here tonight.
Excited to have you. You guys have a big presentation for us, right? Just kidding. So just everybody's, I think, on the same page, but I'll, I'll try and level set real quick. We, uh, you know, we, we as commissioners decided we wanted to get some help, um, with the public outreach, uh, specifically if we were gonna do a survey, uh, some, some professional help in constructing and executing a survey, compiling the data, understanding it. That's why we put the RFP out, that's how we got Wallace Montgomery. But, you know, we have them here, um, you know, we, we've, we've done, I think, a pretty good start with the public outreach, uh, with the civic groups. I think that's probably some information they, they, um, should be, should have access to. And, um, just, I, I wanna not only think about how we're gonna talk to the town and, and get some input from the citizens, but also in the, in the larger scope, you know, is there anything that we're missing? Is this, is this what we need to be doing? Do we need another step? So that's for the commissioners and for Wallace Montgomery with your, uh, experience and expertise. So that's about all I have to get it started. Does anybody have any specific questions they wanna ask Wallace Montgomery before we get started? Before we get started. I have a, I have a question just to kinda kick things off, and that is, um, you know, you guys have done surveys before, right? Um, you know, maybe talk to us a little bit about some of the surveys and some of the more successful ones you've seen, uh, what you know about Poolsville and what you think the right direction might be to get started with, with our town.
Uh, so we've, uh, done numerous kinds of, of surveys in the past, um, everywhere from ones that are thirty to fifty questions, which is too many in my opinion to, to ask on a survey and expect anyone to actually respond to it, uh, to uh, quick ten minute, or ten-question surveys to, um, a new question every week to keep people engaged throughout the process. So there's a variety of different, uh, courses of action to take. I know that in the existing, uh, existing plan, a, a survey was done, there were a set number of questions. Uh, it's always interesting to see, uh, how many of those are, uh, still relevant, something that you would still want to ask again just to see how opinions have changed over that, uh, span of time. Uh, but we do have a, uh, sort of a, a bank of questions that, uh, we go to and depending on, uh, particular areas of interest, say, uh, you wanna know more about people's opinions on transportation or something like that. You know, it's something, at least a starting point where we can go to without necessarily having to, uh, start something, a, a survey completely from scratch. Uh, but obviously, everything gets, uh, uh, specialized for, for the, uh, for the town, um, and, uh, move along that way. We've been doing various kinds of surveys, uh, so having, uh, them primarily be something that's completed online. Um, it's a little, uh, the, the systems that we use will automatically catalog responses and do some initial analysis of that information. Uh, and it's something that we can check into at any point in time and see how many people have responded. Uh, depending on the questions asked, uh, we can, uh, see, um, if we ask a question about, uh, geography, we can see if the responses are, uh, skewed towards one area that's responding or whatever that, um, characteristic might be that we wanna, uh, make sure that there's sort of an equal, uh, representation. Yes.
I'm assuming just zip code-based, the geography. Like, we can't tell people from this neighborhood versus that neighborhood.
We can if we ask them. Um, so it's a, um, there's, you know, there's the automatic, uh, logging of, um, ISP addresses where that comes in, but if that's a question, if that's something that uh, you're interested in knowing where in the community the response is coming from, that's certainly something that we can, uh, that we can include, or, um, even age ranges, or, you know, uh, different, um, characteristics like that, just to make sure that, um, it's not just one group of people that is responding, um, and that's going to...
And I guess, and I'll ask that on the question aside, from your perspective and working with your constituents, you know, some people get that concern of you're being, you know, too big brother-ish, 'cause you know exactly which house I'm in when you do this. We're not trying to do that. We could set it up by, is there a community or neighborhood name or something that we could just, you know, list those seven or eight and say, you know, which area of the town do you live in? Or are you from outside the town? You know, 'cause a lot of times you'll get that, you'll get people from outside giving input. And we just try to track it that way, whatever you all feel comfortable, uh, putting out there in front. Of course, we put the questions in front of you first and say, are you guys okay with these questions before we put anything out there live, but we know a lot of people do get, you know, sensitive or concerned that they're getting too detailed on some of that, so we, we could target it based on that, based on, you know, a neighborhood, or a development, or a just, you know, location-wise within the town, even if that's, um, what you prefer.
That's what I'm in favor of.
Yeah, I, I feel like the, the last one was, uh, I'm glad that wasn't my ears. The last one was, um, you had to put your name and address in to, to fill out the rest of the survey. Which I think worked fine for us back then, um, you know...
Which we can do, I guess I just wanna know, you know, people's concerns or sensitivity, that's all.
Yeah, and I, we're not, you know, we're a fairly small, I don't, I'd be interested to see, and I don't know if Tony has access to the, the last, this last survey we did, but the number of respondents we actually got, just to see, if it, if we're not, if we're not getting huge numbers of respondents, it would be pretty easy to skew some of it if you had somebody with the time and effort.
I would ask for names and addresses, 'cause I think anonymous people will be, you'll get some silly comments and not very helpful survey responses. And if, I would want people to have some honest feedback.
Well, the other side of it too, to ask in that, because this is your effort of starting to get information and what you're gonna be using for updating the plan, is we'd also like to start building that mailing list for you, that contact list for you, so that as there's, you know, responding to the survey, having them give that so that you can, you know, secondary product you get automatically is a name, address, email, and you can use that for sending out announcements and other things, and it's not just a posting to the site, it can actually be targeted to those who've responded, uh, versus those who, you know, you still try and reach out to those who haven't, but you're at least getting those you know that are gonna have the interest, um, and wanna be actively involved.
That'd be, on the Fair Access Committee, we use a software called muster to do our campaigns, you know? And we have about six, seven hundred email addresses. And those are people who have, I see, have vested interests.
In this area, yeah.
Yeah. So that's a starting point. We could provide you with that.
Good.
List, and I'm sure that people signed up to the civic alert. You know, when you sign into the town, you can sign up for alerts. There's a list of people there, too.
To, um, I think I heard somewhere that a survey or some sort of outreach was required when we, when a comprehensive plan is being... But do you know what the requirement actually is?
Uh, a, a survey isn't required. I, I believe the only, um, true requirement, uh, by, by the state is a, um, to hold a public hearing. Um, of course, that leaves public input to when the plan is very close to adoption, um, and so we always prefer to get comment as far in advance as possible, um, so, you know, it's not a you know, the proverbial hand grenade being lobbed into the mix at the, at the very last minute. It also helps to, uh, you know, set priorities and, um, identify the key issues, because of course, um, what a, uh, a staff person thinks is, uh, an issue or problem is different than a commissioner, is different than, someone who's retired, different than someone, you know, so there's, there's a lot of different things that, that go into it. And, uh, so while we, we do, uh, recommend, uh, the online survey being the primary component, we realize that there are segments of the population that either, um, don't want to complete a survey that way, don't have access to, uh, internet, um, or whatnot, so uh, we always, uh, try to have some hard copies available, um, whether they're, uh, placed at the, the town hall that people can pick up, or libraries, or, 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 um, at key locations within the town. Uh, and then we, of course, incorporate those responses, uh, into the ones that we, um, get from the, uh, the online system, uh, to have that full, uh, range of exper, uh, responses, uh, for the analysis. Um, I just, uh, opened to the, uh, the survey from last time, and it looks like, uh, there are about three hundred and ten people who participated, uh, at that, at that point.
What, what, what was the last survey? We did? What, that got three hundred and ten, was that from ten years ago, or?
Yeah, it should be the last.
This was, um...
The last one?
The last one. So, uh, probably in that timeframe, uh, it does look like the questions, uh, were also used in two thousand and two. So it looks like they were, they were continued, uh, with the, the same question bank.
Hopefully we get better responses now, there's more people online now than...
I think, I think that, that'll help, for sure. I think they seem to have sparked some interest with some of the things that have happened the last couple of years, too. Uh, more hot topics. Uh, I also think, uh, we're in, you know, our, it really seems, I'm not trying to sway perception, but I think we need to be aware of the fact that we are closing in on not having any more developable land to really discuss. And that, um, this master plan really could be quite different than what we've seen in the last twenty years. So that, that, the, the questions might not quite be as applicable as they were ten or twenty years ago. Some of them, obviously, I think getting a baseline and seeing how people's opinions have moved would be very good, but, um, I wouldn't be surprised if once we go through this, this process, we find that we wanted a, a very different survey, or at least some different components, and then, you know, who knows where that will lead, but... Uh, and, and just as, you know, you said, you mentioned, uh, all this required would be some gathering public input, having a public hearing. Um, and we would wanna do that at the end, and, you know, you'd wanna get the information out, of course, and that's, that's where we are in the process right now. And, you know, our, we felt like our best way to do this would be to gather as much information and input as we could, then weigh it against what, what we know, weigh all the different things, and evaluate how we wanna, uh, what we wanna do with a master plan, and then start picking components and rewriting what we feel like needs to be rewritten, so... I guess we have, it feels like we haven't done a whole lot, because we've just been sitting back getting information, but I guess there has been a decent amount of information pulled in, so starting to get an idea of where we're gonna go with it.
Something we've done also that could be good, working with you all, is, um, we've actually put a series of questions or homework to the planning commissions before. And say, you know, here's a series of questions we have, we'd like to get your individual responses. Let us look at that and then see how that relates to the questions you have there, and see if there's something that jumps out that's not, that we may wanna be adding as a question or two. And it would be something, you know, we compile and it comes out as just from what we've heard, you know, we're not saying, well, you know, Lexi wanted us to ask this. That's not the way we'd be putting it out.
Right.
But it would at least get a, give us a, an understanding of what, uh, you as the commission are seeing as key issues. And if we're not seeing those sort of questions from what was done before, you know, it really raises that flag of saying we should be including something along those lines. So that's an exercise we usually like to do upfront to get that from you all. You know, we'd send you something and say, here's a series of questions we put together, and is there anything else you wanna add? How do you guys get it back to us? And then we can sort of report out on what that finding is from the group.
I like that idea.
As we develop the survey, so... And it's a very, you know, like I said, a very simple exercise to do, so...
And, uh, we, we usually like to do that not just with the planning commission, uh, but if you're in agreement, uh, to, um, you know, all the other boards and commissions and, and staff and whatnot, uh, and, uh, we typically like to either have responses come directly to us, uh, or, um, have it so that people can submit something anonymously, that way, uh, you know, we'll, we'll uh, give back the responses verbatim, but we, we see that people are, uh, sometimes more honest in their responses if, um, if they know that their, their boss isn't going to tie a response to a particular person, let's just say. Um, but it also, it's interesting to see, um, a, a normal component that we would look at is, um, a, a SWOT analysis, so the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats, and what some people see as a strength, others see as, uh, a weakness, um, so finding out what that information is and then the reasons why is often very, very helpful and very telling.
I was actually thinking about a SWOT analysis, but I wasn't sure how to, that would apply for our, for our group, but I think from your perspective, maybe on, on a broader scale, right, you're thinking about across the board, yeah? With the other boards and stuff.
So you had mentioned that, uh, you want to focus the, the outreach component before you, uh, really dive into the, um, the up, the update or the, the rewriting of the plan to see what the issues are and what, uh, what needs to be changed. Uh, which is, which is great, you know, uh, I think often, um, towns, uh, and others just sort of go in and it sort of comes, comes about that, um, you know, over, over time, or when you're six months into it, that, yeah, that, that part's actually pretty good, we really didn't need to, to make, to make too many changes with that. Uh, but did you have a, a timeframe that you were, uh, shooting for where the, this phase of the outreach would really uh, occur, or, um, and sort of an endpoint before you move into that next phase?
I think we're, we're here now, that, you know, that this is when we should be doing the, the next phase of the outreach, our plan was to get civic groups and then to, I don't, I didn't actually think we, we planned to do it separately, but, uh, without the, the right personnel in place, we were doing these, this outreach, and, and we, we really wanted to, wait until we had a town, town manager, I think, to move forward with getting a contract and, and selecting somebody, so um, that's where we are now. Ready for it, uh, that, that's the final step in, in my opinion, unless you guys have anything else that you wanted to do in terms of reaching out and getting information. There may be some things, and we can have a, a different, a different discussion about this, but that we've seen from the civic groups that we can already start discussing and maybe seeing how that might, especially some things that are certainly not in the plan, that we think we, we would wanna include. And to start discussing about how we may wanna see that implemented into the new plan while this is happening, so that we're not just treading water, waiting for feedback from the residents. But, yeah, now and, and then we'll, we'll be whatever, whatever the timeline of the process takes, um, we don't have any deadlines, all we have to do is keep moving with it. Um, and, you know, we don't, I think we're a pretty efficient group once we get what we need, so... Any other thoughts from you guys? Yeah, absolutely.
Oh, turn, turn that little thingy on.
I, I'm, a couple of things I'm interested in is that, you know, I'm mostly have been a budget and finance person, and I know that, um, online budget tools, you know, really have really come to the fore in the last five or ten years where where residents can go through the exercise of, yeah, you, you think we need to spend more on police, where would you take it out of? You know, and they, and they have this thing that balances, it's, it's, it's a tool, it's a very complex tool, fairly complex tool, but, um, very popular. And that, it, it struck me that people might be able to be of assistance, you know, beyond their opinions. It's like, your opinion relates to transportation, smart guy. How would you rewrite the element? You know? Give us some narrative of how you would rewrite this element, 'cause it's hard. And I think that it gives people a lesson in, you know, all these, all these pieces that the, you know, five people are trying to mesh together, um, you know, the difficulty of that is, is real. And, um, you know, whether that could go on, I think that the, your proposal has a website uh, component, you know, whether that could live there, or whether it could be as part of the survey, I don't know, but I'm just kinda throwing out some, some things from other aspects of municipal life that are, that are kind of evolving as tools for a, um, you know, that, that, they were, they were done pre-pandemic, but now during a pandemic, people are, you know, they're, you know, a lot of them are, are used now to commenting remotely, um, and, and participating in the process that way. And I also thought that, you know, would they be able to, not, not that we're looking for it, but, you know, I, I know that some towns are investigating a, a specific element relating to public health as an outreach of the pandemic, that, you know, urban design and, you know, beyond recreation, recreational health, but actual physical health. That, that those are things that I, I, I know some other towns are, are thinking about considering an element, or modifying an, an existing element to, to include, you know, all of a sudden spacing requirements are different, airflow is different, and, you know, walking and things like that have become, you know, much more important to people. And will people be able to not just comment on what's going on now, but what their vision is, you know, that's been informed by the last couple horrible years? You know, can, can that be folded into this exercise? And I, I know this is really vague, and I'm just kinda throwing stuff out, but, um, that's just some experiences I've had from, you know, just previous posts. That's all I have.
You brought up a good point, and that makes me think we should have a homework assignment where we email them our notes from our civic groups. 'Cause, you know, they brought up different things, like, like Linkhoeing brought up for the Wellness Center and all that stuff.
Would you like to take my extra copies?
Oh, do you have copies of your notes already?
Of course.
Yeah, right? 'Cause I think that would give them a head start on, on what the civic groups gave us.
Yeah, I think I have copies from all the civic groups.
So, 'cause maybe they can incorporate those into the surveys, like...
You're hearing a lot of things where you mentioned, like, you know, you hear the term active transportation now, um, which is sort of, I don't say it's newer, but in a way it is, because it used to be you were doing elements for connecting communities so that you could go from your neighborhood to the store, to the library, to wherever you were going. Well, now it's, do I have a circuit in the town that I can be doing so that I get a two-mile walk while I'm doing it, 'cause I'm out being more active, it's not just getting you to a, a point of interest, it's getting you beyond that. I mean, you've got a nice, you know, park out front here where people can do, you know, walk around and, and see things, and having those connections throughout the town, you're hearing more and more of those sort of requests that you didn't use to in traditional planning, um, exercises, and that's a lot of things that come out of it, so you know, those are things we can start to look at, and from what you're hearing, and, I mean, lots changed in the last year and a half, and, uh...
And that was, um, an area that, um, uh, a few years ago, the Centers for Disease Control, they were, uh, pushing this, uh, healthy communities aspect. Uh, and they partnered with the National, uh, the American Planning Association to sort of move that process forward and see how, um, how health could be incorporated more, so looking at, at things like the, um, the rate of various, uh, common illnesses, um, heart disease, cancer, diabetes, things like that, that's part of public in, information if you're, if you're looking at the right source, obviously not tying it to any one particular person. Uh, looking at that, um, you know, the rate of smoking, things like that, and are there things that can be done in the built environment to um, sort of shift, start shifting that balance so that, um, you're, you're seeing a healthier population, or you're, you're encouraging more, um, healthy habits than, uh, than there might have been previously, uh, tying, tying those two together, um, some, like a, a health fair or a blood drive or something like that, where you're able to get, um, information on, uh, say, the comprehensive plan effort as well as this healthy community effort. So there's, there's a lot of ways to tie that, tie that together, for sure. And you, you had mentioned the online, um, budgeting tool, uh, that's, you know, I've, I've certainly seen that where it's, um, it's a very... That's, you know, I've, I've certainly seen that where it's, it's a very complex tool. It can be, it can be much simpler depending on how it's set up. But we even, not, not that long ago, had an, had an open house where when people attended, they, they were given an envelope and in it were, it was a hundred, a hundred dollars. That was basically town monopoly money. And they had to choose between, I don't know, maybe eight or 10 different categories.
Categories between, yeah, it was, you know, for transportation improvements, for school improvements, for, you know, parks and. Parks, for whatever. And they had to decide where they wanted to put their money.
And there were set denominations. So everybody had fifty dollar, a fifty dollar bill, twenty, a ten, a five, a one. And so they had to, you know, they couldn't just take a twenty and put it in every envelope. They really had to, to think about how they, they were going to be spending that, that money. Of course, they get very clear that there was not a direct tie to the town budget.
Yeah, it was good to see because then at the end of the night, you basically saw where did the majority of the money flow? And what are they thinking? Because they saw the issues of the, of the town. They saw the, and, you know, it was interesting to see how that played out. Was it, you know, evenly distributed? Did a lot go toward, you know, you sort of saw where they thought the deficiencies were because that's where they were putting, putting the money. And it'd be, you know, it's interesting exercise because then you can look at your actual budget and say, wow, are we spending where we should or is there something we need to rethink here? So. That was a fun exercise. And you should have seen it, I, just to digress a little bit, but the excitement people had. Oh, I got, oh, I get to choose where the money go? You know, it, it was actually funny in a workshop setting to get them to do that.
Our trash service will be replaced with limousine trash service.
I think it will be at this point changed, replaced by dependable trash service. Yeah.
We're going to get a survey in about a month, so.
It's tough. I, I imagine everybody's having trouble with trash service nowadays. I mean, I, I can't imagine, anyway. Probably another discussion to have.
So I had a couple of comments that maybe, and this isn't related to surveys.
And public part because I get that's what we're doing tactically. But strategically, from my perspective, kind of being the insider outsider here, it's important to try to figure out how this is going to fit into the overall picture. And I'm not talking about like, and when I like say fluff, I don't mean like that part of it of trying to get these ideas together. I'm talking about the specific tactical things of who is going to put pen to paper. You can do the best surveys in the world and that's why you're here. They've gone out of, 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 you know, the galaxy trying to get the public to say, this is what we want. But all that information is almost useless if we don't actually translate it to a plan. And the theory of how it was done 10 years ago or whenever that was, was volunteers. You know, everybody kind of put pen to paper and they got together and they wrote it as planning volunteers. And I'm not sure that that's going to work to translate the complex things that we're talking about, especially in light of your comp plan means a lot more now than it did because of the limited resources. That it may not be a, we'll write this, it may be we need to review this. And I know it's beyond the scope of where we are. But for example, if you said, here's what the survey results are, this is it. We can add the town engineer here, I mean, but you know, Tony doesn't have any other staff to write things. And so I'm just concerned about, we're going to get, I mean, we, we kind of led the public on to say, we want your input, we want your input and they're going to give it to us. We really have to produce, once we get this input, beyond committee meetings. And it's been difficult, like, you know, when we have three out of five coming, the, the show still has to continue. Along that line, we're getting public input about what the citizens would want to, to live in, it's their community. But I think there needs to be an element, and I don't mean like survey element, but you're probably going to have to deal, if we get to another phase, of the internal parts. Because you may say, I don't want more growth, I want growth, I want those types of things. But the elements of like the transportation element, the water resources element, the land use element, it's great to talk about these general ideas, but the practicalities of like professionals coming down and saying, we have to calculate zoning based on what they want. Or we have a situation where water or sewer is, might be limited in that type of thing. That has to be well thought out. So it's almost like not a survey, but like a sit down with the engineer to figure out the sewer part and those types of issues. If you see what I'm saying is that I'm, I'm concerned, and Tony and I had a brief conversation about this, of what do we do with all this great work product that has to be put into a, a final situation? And then meaningful enough that people can review because everybody has an opinion. And everybody also is willing to help, which may not be great. Okay, I mean, you're going to have like, this is what I wrote, this is what I wrote. And we're all going to sit down and it's like, well, what can we agree on? There might not be a need to agree if it's, we're reviewing one work product that came in. So if you just think about that, I wanted you to know where that's going to go maybe in step two or three so that you can make step one fit into that.
And I can just give, give a little background. I've been a professional planner for 15 or so years. So my background is really in writing comprehensive plans, doing plan reviews, things, things like that. I, my, my first job, I was, I worked for a small town. So I did that and I worked for a county here in Maryland. Ray has previously worked for state, state government. So we, we also have that experience from the, the other side. The, we have to live with what ends up getting adopted. We have to see how this actually gets implemented. And I completely agree with you, there's, it's one thing to get everybody's opinions. But if, if somebody's highest priority is to build a seventy-five million dollar dog park, it, it's not really practical. I, I love, I, I love my dog, but that's not practical. So taking those wishes and translating them into something that is feasible, implementable and is something that, that you can work with every day for presumably the next 10 years, you know, that's, that's something that we, we find very important. And also, we know that, that budgets are more and more limited these days. Costs for everything are going up, trying to reconcile those. So making sure that the way that something is written can translate to a, a funding request. You know, if there's some kind of a, a grant opportunity or something like that that comes out, is it something that's already identified in a comprehensive plan? Because often, especially with state and federal opportunities, it has to be in a, an adopted plan of some kind in order for it to even be eligible. Not, not, not to mention, you know, getting to that, we're actually reviewing what you're asking for. So that's something that we always try to, to keep in mind, you know, not just the reasons, the, the list of things that we want to do, but the reasons why to really bolster that argument.
And, and I can tell you from, you know, representing a bunch of towns around the state, Poolsville implements their plan really like it was intended, like the law was intended. I mean, it is probably a weekly or a meeting thing. It's like, well, the master plan calls for this and they implement policy based on that. For example, you know, they wanted downtown renovated. So water allocation policy is always made with that idea towards it. And, you know, some other municipalities, they go through this exercise every 10 years because they have to. They did it, they put it on the shelf and then they start doing things and what master plan? I mean, and you know, that's how it is. That's not really here. I mean, here they really follow it, which is, is for me, who has to live with implementing it, a real concern if we really don't make sure that those things are doable. I mean, I get some, some ideas of we want to attain a different goal. But pie in the sky things that may be brought in from the public that need to now be implemented are a problem. Like if we have limited resources. I mean, that's what Chairman said. So there will be a policy issue down the road after the master plan is all adopted where we're going to have potential court fights and litigation about how do you allocate these limited resources if we don't think about that upfront? You know, I was always told begin with the end in mind. So that's where we're going to be. And we're ripe to start doing water allocation. This body does that as well. It's kind of been on hold because we don't know what's going to happen next. So you get my idea that there is, we need help, at least in my perspective, the town's going to need help about charting, how do we do this? And you're the professionals at it. You know, we have an idea of how we want it done, but this is what other places do type of thing. Not necessarily with how they write it, but like the steps, the steps. Yeah.
I think one of the key things that we, we put in our, our scope when we submitted it to you is one of the first steps we want to take is, you know, not only what we're getting here with feedback and input, I mean, because that's really the critical set of understanding, your perspective coming into it. I always joke, we have a person in our office whose statement from the beginning is, what's your product? And he always starts with, what's your product? And then goes, okay, well, how are we getting to the product? And one of the first steps we had in here is us going back, taking a look in detail at the plan. We can highlight a few of those items that we see that, okay, this seems to be well covered or maybe just needs updated, or this might be lacking from the experience that our team has. But also then catering that as we look at the survey to say, where may we want to get feedback because of that? You know, we're seeing this and this aren't there. Well, is it not there because it wasn't a concern? Or was it not there because they didn't know it should be a concern? For lack of, you know, that question may not have been asked before. And maybe that's a question that needs to be asked now. And I think that builds where we were talking, your next step is, as you're getting the input, is you're pulling that strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats together. And that really starts to build a little bit of that foundation. And I think if, if we could take that approach with you of, you know, let us look at the plan. We can highlight from our experience where we're seeing things that might be or might be needed or what's come about that's newer now that wasn't there before. Put that list in front of you, at least gives you something to be thinking about where you're seeing, wow, we really are weak on this side or hadn't addressed this. And then we match that up with what we're hearing from you as the concerns. And then use that to really get the right questions out in the survey so that it's useful information. And like you said, it's not just a, you know, people will give the mom an apple pie speech, you know, every time. Well, what's important to me? Well, schools are important and healthcare is important, but we know that. But well, how's that specifically relate here? And that's where we've got to get to that a little more targeted with some of the questions that are in the, from the survey side.
And we don't want a list of questions that people are answering just to answer a question. So there's, there's always that, what, what's the reason that we're asking this? And how does that response, collective response fit in to the, to the end product? So that's definitely something important to think about when we're going in. You know, Ray, Ray was mentioning things that, that, that weren't in the plan. You know, just, just looking at it since this plan was adopted, the state now requires a, a housing element, which wasn't specifically addressed here. They're encouraging a, some sort of a climate change, not necessarily a full element, but thinking about that, how that affects sensitive areas, transportation, housing. So, you know, how might that affect all aspects? So, you know, just, just two items that really weren't a consideration when this, when this plan was written that now are, are things that, you know, definitely want to pay attention to. And then there's of course the, you know, more of the, the trending, you know, things like electric vehicles or even autonomous vehicles. Is that something that, you know, how, how are you thinking about setting that up? There's always these new technologies moving forward. You know, how, how might that be incorporated or, or implemented? So, you know, just trying to think of some of those more up and coming areas that, that weren't even thought of outside of Star Trek 10 years ago, think, things like that. And, you know, that's definitely an area where we can, you know, provide some, some things to think about, you know, with, when we've done work in, in other, in other areas. What are, what are things that some other places are thinking about? What are they doing? And just, you know, trying to stay on top of best practices from a variety of different, different areas. And, you know, seeing how that might be able to help the town or at least something that will, you can think about whether that's something that you even want to address.
I have a few comments. So I hear a lot of, you know, we've looked at, at the prior master plan and the prior master plan has some good things going on. I do know that like Wade was very much into nuts and bolts. The, the more infrastructure related parts of the plan have been, you know, pretty good. And I don't think there are significant changes in that. But I do, and this may be a perception because I am, one, the youngest member here or the most junior member here, I should say, and also because I am the newest resident. I think you all have lived here significantly longer than I have, even though I've been here almost a decade. Is that the document that was produced 10 years ago is fundamentally different than the document that we are producing now. The document 10 years ago was to do responsible, sustainable growth. And the projections for the growth in the document from before were actually, we didn't quite hit those numbers. We didn't grow quite as fast as they had projected. So we still have some growth. But the difference today isn't that we are looking for more sustainable growth. We are end capping our growth. In the next 10 years, we will basically be done. And so this document isn't so much that we're producing about continuing and perpetuating the growth. It is, how do we tie this off nicely? How do we serve our community with the resources that we have left to spend? And how do we shift gears and navigate from five years on, 10 years on to make this community still appealing and sustainable? And all of those other things to keep people coming and wanting to be here and, and being economically viable without the growth. And so I think that saying, you know, looking at, looking at the old document is good, but I do think that it's important to recognize that they will be fundamentally different because the goal, the end, like you said, what is our goal? The end is not sustainable growth. The end is how do we cap this and then remain relevant and viable? Which brings me to my other points. Who have we not reached out to yet? Have we seen from Fair Access? Have we, we have? I can't remember, I'm very tired. And parks.
We had a couple of meetings and made up two, three groups.
Okay, so Fair Access came and Parks and Boards came, right?
Parks and Boards, they stepped, stored medley.
I feel like I, I heard their things, but I can't, I cannot put my fingers on exactly what all they.
Home code.
Okay. I need to go back and review all those notes. So I do like the idea of where does the town want to put its money? And, and how do we want to continue forward? You know, we're a very walkable community. We've always invested in parks and that's great. But there is, there are some elements that like you brought up, the housing element. Personally, I'm very concerned about the housing element. We have really beautiful, large, new homes that are being built right now. We have another addition that where they're wanting to bring on more beautiful, large homes. But then we run into a problem. Where do those mid-range workers who cannot afford to live in homes that are 150% more than the median housing value? Or, you know, what is considered reasonable housing? So how do we maintain enough housing for a workforce? Does that mean that we should consider? I know I'm going to get emails about this. Should we consider? Should we consider allowing for a higher density development of smaller homes in the center of town, which makes a workforce that is then able to walk and commute easily to jobs within town? I mean, more and more people are staying home or working from home. We need to consider that with our limited resources, we have to make sure that we have housing for lower income and mid-income people. And I'm really concerned that Poolsville is not going to be. It, it's great that we're a bedroom community, but we still need to provide basic workers. It, it's great that we're a bedroom community, but we still need to provide basic workers for infrastructure. It's a huge concern. We don't have the transportation right now to import in, nor do we have the size for that. And that's not sustainable anyways, when we're looking at the climate aspect. So, there are some serious things that we need to discuss on how we're going to maybe address these. And it very well could be that we start talking about the overlay and the zoning changes and what is, you know, appropriate.
How many people from town staff live in town? One, two? Something like that.
Yeah.
I mean, yeah, not many.
But not many.
Can't afford to, on salaries we pay them.
Yeah.
That's the story.
Right. So, it, it should be considered. And I know that it is not something that, you know, people are necessarily happy about, but we also have to be realistic.
I don't disagree. So, I'm gonna say something maybe sounds contrary, but only because I think it's more in a different place. And that is, I, I'm sorry, I thought I don't disagree, I a hundred percent agree. However, the, the issue I think that we, we may be missing is that there is a, um, development that has been approved to use the overlay zone already.
Yes.
And what they have proposed, I mean, I don't, I don't know how, I think we can encourage as much as we want, but I think that would be a fundamental shift and, maybe not, maybe not. Maybe that's what, the type of development that you're speaking of, I don't know.
I mean, I, I very much like, I, I, and I've already, I'm already on the record saying that I very much like the project that we saw before. Before they, they pulled it and they said they wanna go and, and do some more looking at what they had. Um, I like that project.
Yeah.
But in my mind, I'm also thinking, man, what if we gave them ten extra lots in the back to make smaller homes so that people could actually afford them? And I'm not, that is not condoning them to change the plan.
Yep.
And that's not making this suggestion, but I'm being realistic.
Yeah.
That we have X amount of resources, we need to spend it wisely.
Yeah. And X is almost one.
Yeah, and X is very, very, very low.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that's, that's something that we're.
Can I add to that for just a second? Cause it, it, at the, at the danger of contradicting Jay, which I was told never to do. And, and Lauren, to some degree, uh, you know, when I, when I hear, you know, that certain things are pie in the sky. Um, I mean, I, I think those are, are not things that we wanna by design exclude. You know, uh, from, again, from personal experience, you know, no one's gonna buy a million-dollar townhouse in Gagerberg. Kentlands happened, and, you know, that's what's going on. No one's gonna live in a high-rise at Rockville Pike, but Pike and Rose still happened. And remarkable things are being done with infill development throughout the county. Um, interspersing, you know, you never tend lots at the back, but interspersing workforce housing. Uh, Gagerberg and Rockville's workforce housing code are, are less than ten years old, I think. Um, but they've been very successful in, in granting, you know, a little bit of extra density. So, you know, I would encourage this group to, you know, let people express themselves. Um, and, cause there's a real groundswell of, of, of just what Huber had, had said about workforce housing and MPDU housing and stuff like that, which I know people get a visceral anti-reaction to, but, um, they're not what you think. And, um, you know, it's, it's worked throughout the county, and, and the county ha- has a very aggressive program itself. But, um, it, it looks like there will be capacity. And, and as I walk around town, you know, there are, there are still lots of buildings that, and, and lots that could come down. You know, I myself built a house on Seventh of Anacre, and, uh, I'm very happy with it. You know, I used to have more than an acre, but, you know, that's just not sustainable for me personally or for the community. And, um, you know, real high demand for that. And so, I, I would encourage people to, you know, again, like I said, to, to express themselves at this stage especially. And a lot of it is gonna become pie in the sky, as, as Lauren said. A lot of people, you know, people love dog parks and antique stores, and everybody wants a bookstore on Main Street. And those things aren't happening anymore. And, and, yeah, I mean, I want people to drive by this other grocery store to go to my grocery store. Um, and, but to, as long as the design doesn't exclude people, you know, doing that, then I, I think you're, you're ahead of the game.
And I think that's, we, we certainly don't want to discount any, any idea that anyone has. Um, but we also wanna be realistic and not have an entire plan full of pie in the sky. You know, there's, there's everything from the proverbial low-hanging fruit. You know, what, what's something that we can realistically get done in the next three months, six months, a year? And sort of ratchet it up to, you know, if, if we do have, um, if a, if a funding source becomes available or a technology changes or something like that. Um, so, you know, have some of the, definitely have some of those aspirational, uh, items in here. Uh, but, um, uh, you know, and, and then that, that full range of everything in between. Um, and the issue that you brought up with housing, that's, that's something that a lot of places are, uh, are facing these days. Um, whether it's workforce housing, missing middle housing, um, affordable housing. There's, there's a range of, uh, different issues, uh, when you talk about the, the housing piece of it. Um, and I think one of the, the things that, uh, makes that conversation even more difficult is that, um, people have an idea in their minds of what is meant by affordable housing or, or workforce housing. You know, that it's, so even just having sort of a baseline definition of what we're talking about helps to move that conversation along. And there's a, a wide range of things that, um, that can be done, you know, just, um, some modifications to the zoning code or, um, you know, just, just looking at, uh, you know, ways that, um, you know, well, there's, there's, there's a lot of different things that, um, that could be discussed to find an appropriate way to, to move forward with those issues.
Yeah, I think one of the interesting thing, and you didn't say it directly in what you were saying, cause your focus was like sort of on that workforce and the other. But we've heard from a lot of communities and, um, issues they're having is, uh, the children of the parents who are living in that community not having a place to go and having to move out because they can't afford the house that their parents in, because they're just starting their careers. And, but they'd love to stay in the area, but they have to go somewhere else because in that transitional time of being a, a young adult versus an established family, you know, they, they don't have those opportunities and they end up moving out. You know, that's another part of the population that often is, you know, people don't think of when you say affordable housing, but a lot of times that's what you're talking about. You're talking about, you know, your kids when they come back from college, or, you know, when they graduate high school, having a place they can be on their own and not have to still be in the house.
And, and conversely, um, a place for your parents to live, so that we're looking at that, that full spectrum, the aging in place, um, are, are those options available along with services that, that, you know, those different sides of the spectrum would, would need to be successful?
I just did that with my parents as an example. You know, they had a, a house, we've all been out of the house for a while, they're in their seventies, and, um, they just actually moved into what literally was an old store. And the person converted the old store into one-level apartment so that it could be walked out. They had no stairs, and they couldn't be happier because that's all they need. They don't have to worry about a yard anymore. They don't have to worry about they're in town. They can walk a block to the, you know, uh, local convenience store and get what they need. And it, it's something I hadn't even, and I'll be honest, in my mind, thought from their perspective. But since they've done it, I'm like, wow, this is the best thing they could've done. And they had that opportunity. So, there are things to look at. And it's not only how you write it in the plan and, and leaving that open within the plan, but it's also how that's communicated out as part of the effort on what you're really talking about and how people vision it. Uh, because like, like Lauren said, there's often a, a misconception about what it really means.
That reminds me, the county recently put in the, is it called accessory dwelling unit? You know, where they're having, they're trying to encourage more, I guess, use of land that's already been zoned. Is that something we wanna think about doing on our master plan? You know, at least looking at that? You, you know what I mean, the accessory?
Yeah, like mo- like adding mother-in-laws.
Exactly, yeah.
Like changing a single-family home into a multifamily dwelling.
Yeah.
It's definitely something to consider. I also think that it's really important that we discuss definitions. Um, I have not run the numbers in the last four months, but, um, when I ran them before and with the, some of the new stats that came out with the census, I believe that when we are talking about affordable hor- housing, we are talking about the three to four, five times range of the annual family income, which for Poolsville, by the way, is north of a half a million-dollar home. So, that's affordable housing by definition. That's not what I'm talking about. I wanna be completely clear that by definition, I am talking of something significantly south of affordable housing. Because affordable housing by definition here is, like I said, north of a half a million-dollar home.
But that's because of the new development.
No, no, that's because of income. I am basing this on family income.
I know, and that's because, so for years, for like all my thirties and early forties, I was a quintessential median Poolsville person. My median house value was four hundred thousand. Our household income was whatever the average was, a hundred fifty or something like that. And our, but now, we're in the lower group, we're below the median. Our, our house price, now the average house is what, half a million?
Yeah.
And, and, and the incomes are now whatever they are. Like, maybe it's two hundred thousand or two fifty or whatever.
But again, that's unattainable for the infrastructure staff that just runs the town. So, as for pie in the sky, and I expect, um, Fair Access to get on this as soon as the high school thing is done, I really would love, this is my personal pie in the sky. I would love to see the town come together as a grassroots effort, um, take the corner across from the pu- the school? Elementary school?
Uh-huh.
Buy it, you know, fair market value, whatever. And then turn it into, with the help of government funds, a community center, an outreach center, a, um, you know, clinic, they could run a clinic out of there.
Oh, yeah.
Once or twi- have a dental clinic come through every two, two to four weeks. I would love to see that become, it is right in the middle of town, become a hub center. Womco could move over there. We could have multiple different, you know, uh, HMC has their own stuff, but we could have multiple groups renting out those rooms and that space. We could have youth commu- youth groups come in and rent out the space. We could run so much out of there. And I would love to see a grassroots push, Poolsville really come together and be like, "We want this property for community use."
So, we, the Fair Access Committee, that is one of our major agenda items. And that's what we've been, we've been meeting with the county over and over. And there's space set aside in this new Poolsville high school plan for additional, cause it's gonna be county-funded, right?
Right.
So, the schools, the land's there, we don't have to pay for, so the push is to build there for these community services.
Yeah.
Instead of having a town have to buy whatever million dollars. I mean, let's build on the property that's already bought and owned by the county.
But man, I would like to see a community use space.
Yes, that's the idea with, that was, but that's been our whole pitch with the high school, is that.
Right, so, and you said the words that I, that I think we've really been, um, abiding by, it's grassroots, right? It's going out to these organizations and the, the community.
Poolsville's good at grassroots. They're good at coming together.
If that's an idea or something that we need to consider putting into a survey to, to gauge, um, response, you know, I, I think that's, that's fair.
Yeah.
Well, I, I think that's going back to your point earlier about what's in the plan that guides our vision, is, you know, the plan is not to be the specifics of which site or which location and all of that, but you wanna make sure the plan does identify the need for this type of facility within the town.
That's exact, and we have that data.
And if you have that in the plan, then when it comes about and you're voting on budget or whatever for it, you can say, "Well, our plan specifically calls out that these are the types of services or facilities that we would like to see."
Yeah.
And that gets you to, "How is it something in the next ten years I can use?" Versus, "Nobody looks at it and I can't back it up." And when somebody argues against it, you've got something to defend the town by saying, "Well, we're doing this because this is what, when we did the planning effort, says we would like to see for the town."
Yeah.
And it gives you that, you know, foundation, a little bit of foundation to stand on.
And we have some of that work already. So, we have a lot of, we have white papers and stuff that tried to get our position out to the county. So, we have the, the county's health assessments and how we rank. The Poolsville area ranks last in health assessments and, uh, life expectancy in the county. And so, we brought all that to the county. So, we need to put that in our master plan to say, "Health outcomes is very impo-" cause I don't think we have anything about health in, in the current.
No, but, but, yeah, but that's part of the whole transition idea, right?
Yeah.
So, so now that we're not looking so much at growth, we can start looking at amenities.
Yeah.
And like I said, how to keep us relevant and healthy.
And when we go to the county, we say, "Look, it's in our master plan."
Yes.
It's.
This is what we need. It's been identified.
I mean, I get what you're saying, is that like, we need to plan for the rest of the growth.
Yeah.
And then we need to make what we have awesome, cause we can't do any of the other stuff.
Thank you.
So, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, you, you mentioned with, um, uh, sewer capacity or allocations or things like that, um, you know, coming or knowing when that, um, sort of that ma- uh, ultimate build-out will, will occur or what's left to get to that point. So, I mean, that's, that's definitely something to, um, well, that, that's, um, you know, related to the, um, the municipal growth element, the water resources element. So, those are two things that, that really have to be thought about. But then also, if you know that you do have that, that limited allocation left, maybe you wanna think about prioritizing it for a certain kind of development. Um, you know, that's, that's something that we're, um, uh, doing with some other, uh, communities that are facing that same problem, um, on a much sooner time scale. Um, and definitely not the easiest conversation to, to have with people, but it's an important one so that expectations are, um, set as early as possible. Um, so someone's not sort of hanging their hat on, "Well, I've had this, you know, family farm, but I'm, I'm holding on to that as my, um, as my retirement. I know that I'll be able to sell it and get, you know, however many hundreds of homes out of it." You know, if, if that's, um, you know, somebody is thinking about that, doing that twenty, thirty years from now, you know, let's say right up front that that's probably not gonna be a possibility. Or, you know, not that, and just to make it clear, not that that's the case here, but, um, you know, those are definitely the kinds of things to think about.
I mean, a lot of other communities talk about like we're reaching capacity and allocation and stuff. And what they mean is, until we have to spend a whole lot more money, you know, to do that, that's not here. Money, once we reach this limit, money won't solve it until they invent something new to deal with sewer. Or we do something absolutely drastic like taking it somewhere else. But, so it's like, it's a very real issue, and it's not that far away. Whereas when other people are planning and saying, it's like, "Oh, you know, ten years from now." It'll be over by ten years from now. So.
Yeah.
You wanna talk about next steps?
Yes.
I'd like, I'd like for us to see, uh, the homework that you, you talked about earlier, the questions, what do we want, where do we wanna go? You guys also talked about evaluating your, checking out our current plan, right?
Mm-hmm.
Getting some feedback on that. And I'd like to know what of the previous survey do you think is worthwhile hearing over? Where do we wanna see, um, potential changes and shifts?
Can I just add also, in your research, if you go to the town school's website, there's a link to the Fair Access page. But that has a lot of that data, that health data and stuff you can use. So, you don't have to recreate the world for that.
And anything you all have, you were talking, your note, exactly. Um, your notes and stuff from the outreach you've been doing, anything you have from that? So, we're, you know, we don't wanna be, we don't wanna duplicate. We may need to ask some of those questions again just to see what response we get, but we wanna make sure we're, um, you know, somebody gets to serve it and, "Well, did I already answer all these questions?" You know, we don't wanna have that sort of response. We wanna make sure we've seen what you've been asking and what you're getting back, so.
Do you think it's reasonable to, uh, and? Do you think it's reasonable to, and can we get this, get your feedback and what questions you think, get our homework back and actually come up with a, within a month's timeframe, come up with what we think the survey's gonna look like? And were you ready for the next meeting?
Is it, is it something that you, you would like, sort of in the interim, we can send you some products, some things to, to think about? And then, you know, we'll get those, those responses and sort of craft, say, a draft or at least a list of, of, of things to, to have more of this type of a discussion at the next meeting?
Yeah. So hopefully at the next meeting, we can look at the nuts and bolts of what, what the questions might look like and where, what the direction we're taking it. And then maybe start the discussion of how this is gonna be implemented and how we're gonna get this out.
And that's what I was gonna say, Bill, before you said is, we'll look at that from a schedule standpoint, with your schedule.
Yeah.
And, you know, we put in here sort of what that public involvement plan would be.
Okay.
And that would be, here are the key elements, here's the time, timing we're seeing. And have you guys an opportunity to review that and say, yeah, this makes sense, or, no, we need to do this faster, or, well, that's gonna get into, you know, we, you know, there's always that timeframe debate, but then we can at least have consensus in the approach. And then for future meetings, you're like, okay, here's what we've got.
These aren't voting decisions. These are things we should be able to bat around and email and, and discuss offline.
Okay. Great.
Do you have any other questions for us?
I can't think of anything right now. I'm sure there, there will definitely be questions, but I think this, this gives us a great place to, to start.
I appreciate, I want to say, I appreciate the open discussion and the opportunity to just get thoughts and ideas out there. Because that really helps us get a better understanding, you know, there's things we know about Poolsville, but, you know, we're not day-to-day residents here. And it's good to hear what you're seeing and seeing. And it helps to, to bring those pieces. So we have experience in the area, you know, it's not, I'm not the one you're running into at the post office every day. And it's good to get.
Follow our town Facebook page?
Yeah.
That would be the worst advice you've ever been, ever gotten.
I know it from my own community page.
I'm sure every community has the same page.
Any other things that you guys need before we wrap up?
I motion to adjourn the meeting.
I second that.
All in favor? Aye. Have a great night, everybody.
Yeah, that was a good conversation.
Very good.